All right, it is 3:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Just a couple of ground rules before we get started. We will go candidate by candidate, ask each person to speak, and try to give like a 30-second overview. What brought you here today? Anything you'd like to say? I will commit my vote, a vote in support of anybody who keeps at the 30 seconds. Above that, I guess it depends on what you got to say. But we do have all your resumes. We appreciate you for sending in all of that. I've reviewed it, as well as the committee members have reviewed it. So we do know a lot about each of your backgrounds. They've been quite impressive. I do want to thank all of you for your willingness to serve on the Trauma Informed Care Task Force. We do have 28 nominees to go through today in a short period of time, and we have an education hearing after this. So time is of the essence. And so I will ask all committee members to hold your questions to the end. We will not be taking any statements. And so we will simply be, if anybody's got any questions for any nominee at the end, they can ask any question to anybody. But all other statements, I would just ask that we hold that for the time being. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to the man himself, the man, the myth, the legend that put this all together, my good friend, Councilman Ziegcon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for expediting this important hearing. I do appreciate it. And thank you to all of my colleagues, as well as the nominees, for the Trauma Informed Care Task Force. When Baltimore passed this legislation, we became the first city in America to comprehensively legislate trauma-informed care. And as a city that has suffered from over 300 homicides for the last six years, as well as multiple times that amount of deaths from opioid overdose, we know that addressing the root cause of violence, of addiction, is critical. And that root cause, in my mind, is trauma. This legislation was brought to us by young people who demanded a response from the city at a hearing. And I am truly grateful to all of my colleagues for unanimously passing the bill and making it into law. I'm so excited for you to hear from all of these wonderful nominees. They've been through an intense vetting process. And with that, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilman Cone. So we will get started. We will go in order of how your nomination came through. So no particular order. We're not, no favorites here. I do have a favorite, and we'll get to that when we get to that nominee. But in the meantime, I will get started with EA0001, which is Teresa Bruce. Teresa, if you are on, if you can unmute yourself. And I do not see Teresa. Okay? We will move on. If people are missing, we'll just move on, and we'll come back to them. The next person is David Funkel. Is David on?
David Funkel, yes, he's here.
Hey, David. Yeah, if you can get started and give your introduction. Thank you.
Yes, well, I am a product of Baltimore City, East Baltimore specifically. And while we have all dealt with various manifestations of trauma, we've also dealt with various manifestations of healing. And I think we definitely have ideas and ways that we can bring that to a city level. I mean to just serve as a reminder that, in order to heal, you must start with your story. Everyone has a story that is valid. Everyone has a story that should be heard. And if you truly want to heal from the many manifestations of trauma that exist in a city, you must give people the space to tell their story. So if I serve no other purpose on this task force, I will reinforce the importance of giving the people the space to tell their story, because there is truth, there is power, and yes, there is healing in story. Thank you.
Thank you so much, David. The next one we will go to is Philip Leaf. And before you get started, Philip, after we have, after you have testified and spoken, if you do need to go off to a different meeting or anything else, you can do so. You do not need to be present for the vote. So go ahead, Philip. I see you're still muted.
There you go. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, committee members. I do have to teach a class at 4:15, so I'll be on until then. I live in Roland Park. I spend most of my time in East Baltimore. And I think this legislation, as well as a lot of other work that's now ongoing in Baltimore City, is critically important, and particularly the issues of moving from what's wrong with you to what's happened to you. And that no one can do everything, but we all need to do something. I think whether we work in the city or live in the city, there are things that we can be positive about. And I think that's what the task force is going to be focusing on. Hopefully, that's under 30 seconds.
That was, you have my support. Thank you. Next up is Jabari Lyles.
Everybody, I've been an LGBTQ community member for a very long time. We know that while folks in the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer community are some of the most vibrant and brave folks in our society, they are also some of the most unfairly traumatized. So for us to really make sure we get a comprehensive lens of what trauma looks like in our city, it's incumbent upon us to make sure LGBTQ people are at the table. So I'm very excited to offer that perspective. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you so much, Jabari. Next up is Daniel Parsons.
Thank you. Yeah, so as a Baltimore City educator for almost a decade, I remain perpetually astounded by the brilliance and the resolve of my students, especially given the harrowing stories that so many of them carry. And in bearing witness to those stories, I felt the impact of vicarious traumas that sent from being powerless to change so many of the conditions that they face. But trauma-informed practice, for me, is about asking one simple and disruptive question. It's a question I've seen so many brilliant educators use to de-escalate students in crisis. And that question is, what do you need? It's a question we rarely ask our youth, and it's really our job to listen to what they have to say.
Thank you so much, and thank you for being a teacher. Next up is Delegate Regina Boyce.
Thank you so much, and I want to thank you for the opportunity, not only to be considered, but to potentially serve. And I just want to say and echo all the sentiments that we have all been affected by trauma, some of us more than others. And not all of us know how to manage it, and not all of us have had the opportunity to manage it. But we press through it, and we continue to press through it, and it's not okay. And some of us are pressed through it, and some of us are forced to wear it as a badge. But either way, we are, I believe, a traumatized people. I think we are traumatized history. I think we're traumatized communities. I think we're traumatized institutions. We're traumatized government, and we have traumatized policies. And the, in the same way, you know, hurt people hurt people, and traumatize people traumatize folks. And I have my own personal traumas, right, that I have to deal through. And I believe we have the ability to, I think, as David mentioned, to not only share our own trauma, but also to use this as an opportunity for folks to talk about their trauma, to admit their trauma, and then have us move, as a city, to heal from our trauma. I want to get to the point where no child, no adult, has to go through their life talking about their perpetual and consistent and constant trauma. It is overwhelming. It is killing our families, it's killing our children, but most importantly, it is killing our city. And if I can be a part of this process to begin the healing of us together, then that is a place I'm hoping that I can be. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Delegate. And it's always great to have our state partners working with us on the city and vice versa. We all are one team. So thank you for that. Is Erica Bridford on? I do not see Erica. Okay, I'll come back to her. Do we have Donna Bruce? Donna Bruce? No, okay.
Donna Bruce is trying to get on, working through the WebEx. If you can come back to her.
Yeah, she's, as an attendee. Richard, if you can please elevate her. In the meantime, we will move on to Dr. Stephen Zen, and we'll come back to everybody else.
So, thank you, Mr. Fleischer. It's really an honor to spend 30 seconds with you today. I applied to be a member of this task force to fill the spot of a pediatrician on this task force. What I hope to bring to the task force is 30-plus years of practicing as a pediatrician, as well as directing and running the University of Maryland Children's Hospital. I'm committed to the children and the families of Baltimore. And I believe that healthcare professionals can provide a framework for recognizing adverse childhood events, which we now call ACEs, and provide some guidance and counsel to the families to lessen anxiety associated with adverse childhood events. So I'm hoping that I can interact with everybody and see if we can come up with a way to create a safer environment for the children of the city. And I'm looking forward to joining this group. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, doctor. Donna Bruce, I see you've been elevated. Thank you for joining us. You can go ahead and just give like a 30-second introduction, you know, what brings you to this committee.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Donna Bruce. I am a person with lived experience that has overcame many obstacles of trauma. I am a certified therapist. I work now for Baltimore County Detention Center with the mental health, where I'm actually teaching coping skills and everyday skills just to live. And uses with others to live a productive life. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Kevin Daniels.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm excited to be a part of this great team, Trauma Informed and Responsive City. I am indigenous to Baltimore, Sandtown. I'm a part of the great Healing City team. And by the way, we're in conference for this week. And I'm excited to be a professor at Morgan State University in social work, sending out clinical and community workers into the field and talking to them about trauma, being trauma-informed, but also the civic action of the Faith-Based Ministers Conference. So I'm excited on both ends to be a part of this great team and to add to it and to ask the ultimate question, not what's wrong with you, but what's right with you.
Thank you very much. There you go.
Hello, I'm Elijah. I asked to join the task force, bringing the perspective of both a returning citizen and a member of my community looking to help facilitate change in the way we view and address trauma. As one who's suffered destructive effects of trauma for over 40 years of my life, it's imperative that I utilize my experience to assist and bring awareness. I'm still in the field mentoring, and I see the effects of trauma that it has on our young people and the members of our community throughout the city. And I'm just here to do whatever it takes to bring full change.
Thank you very much for that. The next up is Desiree Dixon. I see you on here. Can you unmute, Desiree Dixon?
She was just elevated. She may have to unmute herself.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Desiree Dixon, if you want, you can unmute yourself. Did that work?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you. So if you can just give, you know, 30-second introduction about what brings you to the committee.
Sure. Hi, my name is Desiree Dixon. I am the founder and CEO of Fulton 13 Wellness. I run a private practice here in Baltimore. And I am a social worker and a trauma expert. Here, I've worked with hundreds of individuals and families over the years, over the past 10 years here in Baltimore, helping them through various issues of trauma, generational trauma and cumulative trauma. And the work that I've done, I've seen incredible results from that work. And I would love the opportunity to continue to do that work with many of the families that I haven't been able to reach in Baltimore to help to develop a comprehensive plan in order to help them heal as well from the trauma.
Thank you very much for that. The next one up is Tara Doty.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Tara Doty, and I'm the founder and lead consultant of Sage Wellness Group. We are a consulting firm that uses a trauma-informed, aware, and responsive approach to support the objectives of human service organizations. I am interested in being a part of this task force because I think that it focuses on Baltimore's biggest strengths, which is its people coming together both collectively and individually and identifying what and who is needed to support the individual healing of Baltimore city residents and the collective healing of the city. I believe that this task force will provide me with the opportunity to both learn and share out my expertise, grow and build relationships that can help shift the narrative from "I need to heal" to "I can heal," to "I am healing," to "I am healed." So thank you all so much for that opportunity and consideration.
Thank you very much, doctor. I apologize in advance, because I'm definitely going to butcher this name, but...
That's probably me.
Yeah. You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, happy to. You have the same kind of tone as my teachers from kindergarten. My name is Panegy Scoliet-Satos. I'm born and raised here in Baltimore, on the Highland Town side. Greek immigrant parents. Didn't speak English until the age of five. I just thought all of Baltimore spoke Greek. I'd like to bring to this committee two things. One is just that I'm a Baltimore son, a child of the city. And the city, I view it as giving my own identity. A lot of the work that I do as an academic physician is focused on community engagement to mitigate healthcare disparities, trauma being one of them. The other arm that I wear, that I feel like can bring strongly to this committee, is being a critical care doctor, a doctor in the intensive care unit. I care for many patients who are first victims of trauma, and then the second victims after that, caring for their families and so forth. So we've led a community engagement to work with such patients and such individuals and such community members. And third, everyone who's amazing. And so I bring excitement to be able to be a team player with all of these amazing individuals that will make Baltimore and its community members better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And, Richard, if you can elevate, Council Vice President is in the attendees. And anybody else who needs to be elevated. We'll go back to top. Teresa Bruce, I see you are with us.
Good afternoon, everyone. My apologies for being late. I was actually still teaching, and the kids had some wonderful questions that I couldn't get out of, actually about the American Revolution. But anyhow, my name is Teresa Bruce. I am a social studies teacher in Baltimore City Public Schools. And my interest in joining the task force is the reason why I'm late. It's the students. It's the youth. I am very passionate about student voice, student choice, and student success, student wholeness. And you notice I keep saying the same thing, "student." And that's why I'm here, because I think I bring a unique perspective as an educator on the front lines, not only engaging with young people and families who have experienced trauma, but as an educator myself, because we experience secondary trauma through our positions. Through a spot on the task force, I am hoping to inform policies that will help us prevent adverse childhood experiences and therefore push our scholars to the highest heights of success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As long as no committee members object, I would like to just continue on to the second group that we have, and then we'll just take a vote at the end. Okay, no objections. We will proceed. Next up is Lindsay Gavin.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Lindsay Gavin. Pleasure to be here, and I'm super excited to serve in this committee. I'm a clinical licensed psychologist. I work in Baltimore City at Mount Washington Pediatric Hospital, and I'm the coordinator of our trauma services at the hospital. So I work with kids and families on a day-to-day basis who are suffering from the psychological effects of trauma. But you only ever get to work with one patient, one family at a time. So I joined this committee because I want to have more community impact on the city of Baltimore and focus on prevention efforts so that we can address trauma at its root causes and also address different systems that re-traumatize youth and their families. So I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I knew you looked familiar from somewhere. I spend a lot of time at the Mount Washington Children's Hospital in different meetings and helping them in any way. Thank you for being here. The next up is Monica Guerrero Vasquez.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here today. I would like to join and echo everybody who has already intervened and participated. I am an immigrant, and I've grown up with traumatic experiences. I'm a survivor of adverse childhood experiences. And those have marked my life to dedicate it to serve immigrants and marginalized communities. And that's what I have been dedicating my time here in Baltimore City, which is my new home. I migrated twice, one from Ecuador and another one from Spain. And I would like to be part of this group to ensure that there is cultural competency and culturally appropriateness in the trauma-informed care that the city is going to provide for our children, our youth, and our families. And culturally appropriateness is not only language services. It goes beyond about respecting and acknowledging the origin and the cultures of our new neighbors. So I look forward to collaborating and working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next up is Lydell Hills.
Yes, hello.
Hey, yes.
I'm with you now. Hello. Hello, everybody. My name is Lydell Hills. I'm the founder of Truth to Power, a program currently within Organizing Black, fiscally sponsored by Public Justice Center. And currently, I'm trying to be part of this task force is because of the same work that pushed me through the power in black communities and helped strengthen the relationships that are going on in black communities. Basically, I founded Truth to Power back in 2018 under fiscal sponsorship of the Baltimore Community Leadership Center, where I was serving as a mediator. And the focus of this movement has been on the school-to-prison pipeline while serving as a reentry mediation specialist. So a lot of this work is just important to me personally because of the same reasons why we were working in the prisons and people in my community and people in my family and people in my life who have been impacted by the carceral system. So I'm here to build community. And the work that we started doing with Truth to Power was to be more proactive in the school-to-prison pipeline and to start empowering youth, to start being aware of the issues that are going on in their community. And so the mindfulness practices that, and the mindfulness and creative practices that we do in our program is all meant to help youth create a space to heal and reflect from the issues that are going on and reach a place where they can start speaking on those and become leaders in their community. And so, you know, applying that as like a young person who's helping other young people reach and hopefully be part of this movement as well. Yeah, I hope to be able to serve and create impact with this group that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person up is Mark Jews. I can see you. I just can't hear you. Still not working. Okay, we could, while you're figuring that out, we can go on to the next person and come back, if that's okay. There you go. All right. The next person up is Brendan McFadden.
Mr. Chair, this is Nina in the mayor's office. He's having trouble connecting. He'll be on in just a minute or two.
Okay, thank you. Next person up is Tamar Mandelian.
Mendelson is the chair.
I'm sorry, Tamar Mendelson. Is she on?
Mr. Chair, that is the one individual who is unable to attend today's hearing.
Okay. And Young Elder, I did not see her come on. Is Young Elder on? I do see a couple of call-in users. I'm not sure if they are one of...
If you want, I can elevate the call and see if any of them are...
Now, we'll unmute them at the end. The next person up is Shawna Murray Brown.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Shawna Murray Brown. I am an integrative psychotherapist, trained as a clinical social worker here in the city of Baltimore, born and raised. My work has been, for the past 12 years, holding healing space for folks in the city of Baltimore, as well as those that care for them. I'm really passionate about working collaboratively with other members of this task force. And I hope to bring not only insight from what the data says about the unique experiences of black folks and brown folks as it relates to race-based traumatic stress, but also understanding the importance of acknowledging historical trauma and how these insights can translate into actual practices within organizations. My work is informed not only by my experience in working in Baltimore City Department of Social Services and sex abuse investigations and policy and research and residential treatment centers and juvenile detention centers, as well as working in these local school systems. I am really happy to be able to also pull from my experience of maintaining my own integrative psychotherapy practice here in the city. So I'm really excited about the ways that we might be able to bring our vast ideas together to be able to implement them in ways that transform the lived experiences of those that live in the city of Baltimore.
All right, thank you very much. The next person up, Nikia Namudi.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Nika Namdi. I'm the Director of Community Development for the Living Wealth Center for Social and Economic Vibrancy, as well as the creator of Fight Black Be More, where we focus on looking at the fight on communities. And I intend to bring to this task force a racial equity lens, specifically centering the ways in which black people use their own indigenous healing practices to address and heal trauma.
Okay, thank you very much. Richard, if you can unmute the 273 number. Can you unmute the 273 number? Is that you, Destiny 273?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. So my name is Destiny Philpott. I'm the co-founder of Good Kids in Mass City, as well as the Youth Ambassador for the Baltimore Youth Fire Movement. I've lived in Baltimore my entire life, lived through the trauma of being a black, disabled, non-binary femme in America. The work that I've been doing has always been geared towards ending the seemingly endless cycle of trauma that youth like myself have been forced to endure. So simply put, I want to work on the task force to continue the work that I and many others have embarked on to end the cycle of trauma so that black and brown youth can live and not survive, to do the work to live and help youth thrive in communities that aren't ravaged by violence and trauma that destroy the capacity, the hope, the dream to heal and thrive. So thank you. I hope, I look forward to working with you all.
All right, thank you very much. The next person up is Colby Sangre.
Hi, y'all, and thank you for considering me. I'm Colby Sangre. I use they/them pronouns. And I work in service of unhoused youth. I use they/them pronouns and I work in service of unhoused youth at the Youth Empowered Society Drop-In Center. I'm here to say Baltimore youth are incredible and deserve city systems that are not traumatizing to engage with. When government recognizes the effects of aces on young people and works to repair harm, and when government proves itself trustworthy and invests in youth, we necessarily are building towards a city where youth are powerful in their own lives, and that is a city where we all thrive. If selected, you can count on me to center youth.
All right. Thank you very much. The next up is Anaya Taylor.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Anaya Taylor. I am the co-founder and director of the Youth Initiative and also a youth ambassador for Baltimore Ceasefire. I was watching a TED Talk that Erica Bridgford did and she mentioned collective consciousness. And that's something that I look forward to leading in when we talk about our youth and as the community moves in a space of collective consciousness, understanding that accountability should be at the top of it and understanding that it is a top-down, understanding that accountability is a big part of moving away from trauma and healing from trauma and centering students' voices, as well as, as Destiny said, minority students, students who are overlooked, students who are underprivileged, centering those voices. And I hope that the work that I do always centers those voices and I hope that this community task force can be another outlet that I do it on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The next up is Farah Wahid.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Farah Wahid. I'm a special education teacher in West Baltimore and I'm really just hoping to bring some critical perspectives to the trauma-informed care task force. Like many of you, I'm part of many marginalized groups. I'm an immigrant. English is not my second language. I've experienced a lot of trauma personally. And of course, as a special education teacher at West Baltimore, every single day I just hear so many firsthand and secondhand conversations of students that have really experienced trauma and a lot of adverse childhood experiences. I'm really excited to do this work with you all. Some of my personal Baltimore heroes are right here on this WebEx, so I'm excited to collaborate with you. And I really just want Baltimore to heal. I want Baltimore to thrive and I'm willing to do whatever it takes. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you so much for that. The next up is Corey Witherspoon, which I believe is caller number 522. Richard, if you can unmute the 522 number. Are you able to unmute the 522 or should we come back to that one? All right. We will come back to that one. The next up would be Erica Bridgford. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Erica Bridgford. I am Executive Director at the Baltimore Community Innovation Center, co-founder of Baltimore Ceasefire. I am interested in being on the task force because most of my adult life has been dedicated to facing violence and murder specifically head-on and helping people learn how to create peace. And in doing that work, I've been impacted by violence a lot myself. And I see not just the aftermath and the trauma that's in the aftermath, but also I very much understand the root causes of violence and the traumas that lead to violence and how it's just that the policies that get made and all of that kind of stuff. And so, I'm very interested in having my voice and bringing with me voices of others who are living with trauma. I'm interested in having all of our voices in those conversations so that Baltimore can be the very place that I want.
All right. Thank you very much. Mark Jews, is your microphone working? Mark, are you there? There is your microphone working? Okay. All right. Don't worry about it. We got your resume and I'm sure you'll be okay. If you want to try to work it out, I mean, I can come back to you if you want a message in the message box. If not, we'll just move on to the next, to the next one. If you want, you can type a message in the chat if you'd like. That's an option for you. Back to Brendan McFadden. Is Brendan here? Yes, I see.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you, yes.
Perfect. So, first I just want to thank everyone that's here, both the panelists and the councilmen and women that are here for putting this forward. I think this really has the potential to truly change the city of Baltimore, as well as cities around the country. I am an educator, so I have seen firsthand the impact of trauma and aces on my students, the staff that I work with, the parents, and the overall community. And as a parent myself, I really think that this is something that we could really improve again, the city, really improve the outcomes for all individuals that live here. And I just really would like to take part in this and I thank you again for the time and consideration.
All right. Thank you very, thank you very much. The next one up is Corey Witherspoon. Corey, are you there? I saw Corey before. I do not see Corey now.
It was on previously, Mr. Chair. It may have been dropped. It gets all dicey when you get this many people.
Yeah, I see, I see Corey's back on. I think it's the 522 number. Can you unmute the 522 number?
Oh, let's see. Try this one.
Hello.
Yeah, we got you, Corey.
OMG. Hey, family. This is Corey Witherspoon, co-chair of Caesar Promise Mentoring. Goodness gracious. When we talk about trauma, Caesar Promise and Renaissance Academy, Buckminster Washington Middle School, the communities, we went through trauma together. We experienced death. We healed, we cried, and we graduated many, many, many young people out of the 21217 area. So, when I say we healed a community, we did it. We did it together. And I know with this task force, we only did it with four men. With this task force, all these great people, we can go and move Baltimore. So, that's the intent of myself and you all being part of this, the trauma-informed team. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Corey, and we're glad we were able to get you unmuted. Last and certainly not least, I indicated in the beginning that I do have one favorite and that is our next one up, Young Elder. Would you like to take it away?
Everybody, thank you so much for considering me. My name is Young Elder. I'm a heart smiles, heartbeat. I'm also a freshman at Cockman State University and I'm a Healing Youth Alliance Ambassador. So, one of the reasons I really want to be on the task force is because I've experienced a lot of traumatic experiences on hand, but unlike a lot of my peers, I was able to have the opportunity. Hold up. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, cool. So, understand what it's like to see what it's like past trauma. So, for a lot of my peers, I understand that they haven't really had that opportunity and I feel like being on the task force would be a great catalyst for me to be able to show them we can heal from trauma and we can be better and build a community. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much. I was happy to see your name on the list. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to, if you'd like to give us a couple of lines, you want to, you want to give us a quick wrap, we take it if you want it.
Sure. It would be a pleasure. Give me five seconds. Okay.
Give us something.
How I'm doing, though, I ain't doing well because I'm living in a system where we set up to fail. See statistically, I'm supposed to be dead or in jail, but I took a different route and told a Michael prevail. See, I come from a city you can't go out after dark. Yeah, it's murder after murder and I don't know where to start. And something got to change because it's breaking my heart. Yeah, I'm looking for the peace, see falling apart. I say these babies killing babies. I'm like, how do we come to this? Then we posted on the gram and somehow we numb to this. Something got to change because I've had enough of this and we killing all the people and now we can't run from it.
Young Elder never disappoints. I'm glad I asked you to do that. That was incredible.
Thank you so, I really.
She's got great reviews from the panelists, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. What was that?
She's getting great reviews from the panelists.
Yeah, she always gets great reviews. She's always on point and you can put her on the spot. There's always a great, you know, it's always great, great hearing from Young Elder. I think we covered everybody. I will now open the floor to the committee. If anybody has any questions, I just ask, you know, to veer away from just random statements like what I just did. But if you have any questions, feel free to ask anybody any questions. Okay. If there are no questions from the committee or no questions from any council members, we will proceed to a vote. What I would like to do is ask for a motion on all of the nominees and we will do a roll call collectively if there's no objection from any members of the council on that.
Mr. Chair, I think the motion to move the package, I think we have an excellent group of folks in front of us and would all be asked that the city of Baltimore on the board.
Hi. Do we have a second?
Second by Costello.
Okay. So, motion by Burnett, second from Costello. Richard, can we do a roll call?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Chairman Schleifer.
Yes.
Chairman Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Costello.
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torres has been excused. Mr. Chair, six votes. I'm sorry. Was Mr. Torres here? No. Mr. Chair, six votes and a affirmative, no negatives. These nominations can go to second reader at Monday's meeting.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And yes, Councilman Torres had a family emergency, so he could not make it. He apologizes. And I will give Councilman Cohn an opportunity to close us out.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all my colleagues for unanimously confirming this task force. So, folks know, you'll now go to what's called a second reader, back to the city council and we'll vote again and then you go to the mayor. I wanted to say that clearly Baltimore's best asset is its people. That's what we've seen here today. And when we think about how do we heal from trauma, you know that we are the medicine, all of us working together. And so, I am so incredibly thrilled about this task force and the work that we intend to do. Thank you so much. And again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for expediting this hearing.
Thank you very much, Councilman Cohn, and congratulations to all of you. That concludes today's hearing. We are on recess. Thank you.